... screen, you can refer to that act at any time during the course of this meeting if you so desire. We'll begin with the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. And the items on this evening's consent agenda are as follows. Item A, approve agenda submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on September 15th, 2014, is on file in the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of minutes of special meeting on September 29th, 2014, is on file in the city clerk's office. Item F, approval of minutes of work session on September 29th, 2014, is on file in the city clerk's office. And item G, approval of Main Street Beatrice application for a special designated liquor license for the pheasant hunt fundraiser on November 7th, 2014, from 4:30 PM to 11:00 PM, and November 8th, 2014, from 3:00 PM until midnight at 701 Court Street in Beatrice. Those are the items on the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council wish to have an item removed for individual discussion?
I'll abstain from E and F.
Okay, it'll be so noted.
I will abstain from G.
Yeah, it will also be noted. Anyone on the council need an item removed for individual discussion? How about anyone in the audience? If not, may we have a motion, please?
Mayor, I move that all the items listed under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented. Sir?
Moved by Catlin and seconded by Kerr that the items listed under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented. So your discussion on the motion from the council, from the audience, and your vote, please. That motion carries eight zero, and it will be noted that Councilmember Morgan abstained on items E and F, and Councilmember Claybuck abstained on item G. Move on to resolutions. This time I'll introduce Resolution Number 5685 entering into a lease with Gage County for office space in the Beatrice Police Department.
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 5685 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, was that Cook? Seconded by Cook, that Resolution Number 5685 be passed and adopted. Several weeks ago, I was contacted by Matt Balman, the chairman of the county board, asking to renew the lease the county currently has with us for the upstairs, or the portion of the upstairs of the Beatrice Police Station. He's asked that the terms and rent be continued as is or as was for the past couple of years with no changes to the lease. I don't believe we made any, did we? To anything else, so that stands before you this evening. And the floor is open for discussion.
How many square feet are they using, approximately?
You might have better luck knowing than I do. I'm trying to think.
I want to say...
600 square feet?
No.
None but zero.
6,000 square feet?
There you go.
I was getting the hand signals from Blang in the back.
Roughly about half of the upstairs they're using. Additional council discussion? Audience, anyone? And your vote, please. Motion carries eight zero. Resolution 5685 has been passed and adopted. Next, I'll introduce Resolution Number 5686 granting permission to Julie Compton, doing businesses Julie's Hot Dogs, to sell goods upon city property.
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 5686 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that Resolution 5686 be passed and adopted. Julie, might come up and tell everybody what you're doing?
It all started when I was doing some fundraising for the fire department at the popcorn stand. And I thought, wow, this is really fun. And then the whole hot dog cart come to mind. And here I am asking you guys for permission. I'm going to have a hot dog cart, and so far just selling hot dogs. And they're going to be a little bit fancier than your average ketchup and mustard. They're going to have little, maybe the Reuben Dog. And I'm still planning on my, what else I'm going to do, but that's kind of a start. Any other questions I can...
You didn't bring any samples for all of this?
I didn't. My hot dog cart's not completely constructed yet.
Oh, darn.
I know. I will hook you up, though.
It would've been easier vote if you would've had...
Who's building your cart?
What's that?
Who's building your cart? Why isn't it done?
I've been there.
He probably hears plenty of that already.
Julie, are you...
... still talk for the ten today, so we're still processing.
Julie, can you give us an idea of how many hours per week you plan to run it and where you plan to park it? I mean, the resolution says sidewalks, parks, sports fields, right away, public right away. And I guess I don't really have a problem with it, but I kind of like to know, you know, or it's not like an ice cream truck.
No, I'll, it actually pushes. It's a push cart. It'll be pulled by a vehicle on a trailer, and it's about six feet long and 40 inches wide. And it's going to have a beautiful red and yellow umbrella, so it'll be kind of traditional that way. I want to go to Fifth Street, of course, and there's some neat little places there that I've been kind of eyeballing that it would fit and kind of go along with a popcorn stand, kind of be a fun nostalgic thing to have going on. A few other places.
Okay, well, they're common, yeah, I mean, they're common if you, you know, in metro cities on the East Coast, they're pretty common. I just wondered if this was going to be a weekly thing or just a weekend thing or...
I'm hoping it could be like a week thing, three or four days a week when I'm not working at my real job. Weekends, special events would be fun. That's, that would be really great. Do some fundraising with it. That would be really fun, too.
Yeah, but I don't have a problem with it. I'm going to vote for it. I guess the only thing you're probably going to, somewhere along the line, probably, we will probably run into, you know, the other organizations that she might compete with at baseball or softball games, or that was my question, if it was a competition type, you know, that we, you might run into that, but I don't have a problem with that either, so that's why I was asking.
Yeah, I would definitely donate some funds to them. I'm a big baseball fan, softball...
I got it. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Are you governed over, under the food inspector, then?
I am. She's watching over me real close. So, yeah, and I will become food service manager. I go in Wednesday to get schooled for that. It's a certification and everything, so I'll have all the rules and regs under my belt. She'll inspect the cart. It'll be completely state-approved.
Okay, Dwight?
I had a couple of questions, sort of like what Ted had, too. I was a little concerned that you might just push it up on the sidewalk and block access to walkways and stuff. You'd be more courteous than that.
Oh, absolutely.
And about utilities, you run that off of propane or electricity?
It's all propane, yeah. I'll have, they're just the small tanks. I'll have one of those running it. No electricity. And there's two burners on it, and they'll have an ice chest. It's all self-contained. I won't even have any excess water running off from my ice or anything. You won't hardly even know I'm there. You'll just smell all the good cooking is all.
And if it catches fire, she probably knows how to put that out.
I'm pretty sure I know how to put that out. And I'll have a fire extinguisher on there, too. It's actually going to kind of mimic a fire truck a little bit, so...
If it gets built.
That's what I was saying.
Bring it in and show us?
We bet you it will happen.
I'll bring you to it.
Oh, okay.
Anybody with any other questions, comments for Julie?
I think it's going to be fun. I'm hoping it will. It'll be fun for the kids to see and just kind of neat.
Is anybody else going to run it besides you?
I might have a few guest cooks, if you will. Are you a good cook?
No.
Becky, yes.
If he's cooking, I'm not buying.
And I can sell water and pop and tater chips, too, so...
Anyone in the audience like to come up and comment? You're certainly welcome to. Any further council discussion? Your vote on the resolution, please. Motion carries eight zero. Resolution 5686 has been passed and adopted. Now you just got to get him to finish it.
I know, and I'm hoping to get a couple times in this month yet, so I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Okay, this time I'll introduce Resolution Number 5687 establishing various fees.
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 5687 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that Resolution Number 5687 be passed and adopted. Council had a chance to review this during the work session, setting the fees for various and sundry city services. You want to just hit the basics for the, for the audience?
Sure.
The ambulance fees that are being raised and et cetera?
And this is something we started a year ago. We want to have all the fees in one document. It makes it easier for us to find. It makes it easier for the public to find them. And every year, we want to go back and review this and see if there's anything we need to change or update. And this year, the only ones we have to update are the ambulance rates, which are set out on page 24 of your packet. Those ambulance rates have not been raised, I believe, for three years. We've looked, we contacted other communities around us to see what they're charging. We contacted the insurance companies. We contacted Medicare to see what their rates, that they were willing to reimburse. And when looking at those and comparing to our current rates, it was a need for us to increase our fees to be in line with where those other communities at, and also in line with the additional charges that it costs to run the equipment from the last three years. So you've seen those numbers increase. Each one increased, you know, five or $10 for most part. Most of them weren't large jumps, that I recall. Other than that, there were some language changes. Some of the permits we had here were annual permits. In reality, they're biannual permits, so we clarified those. And then the other change was is that we added Section 5 of the resolution, which is on page 29 of your packet. Those are the various fees for planning and zoning. We did not increase those fees. We simply added them into this fee resolution. So again, they were all in one place, easy to find, easy to locate.
Questions, comments? Rich?
Two questions. On the work session, I asked about a penalty, fine for people who start their, I see you have that under application fee for evacuation, payment cuts, whatever. What is going to be our...
Where are you at?
Page 27. What I want to know is what is going to be the fine if we catch somebody building without a building permit? What, do we have a base fine or...
Well, it says in, on page 27 of your resolution or your packet, that if you begin work without the necessary permits, the penalty is equal to 100% of the usual fee. So essentially, you pay a double permit fee.
A double permit fee?
Two times the amount.
Okay. The other question is, how long do those building permits last? It used to be, I thought, 90 days. How long?
Used to be six months, I think it's six months with an option for another six.
They come in on option, six months?
I believe.
I think it's six months with an option for, yeah, I see the three or six additional months.
Yeah, I couldn't remember. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Ted?
Under, on page 25, the Section D, the response and the fire extraction, the asthmatic thing, so there's an, let's say there's a two-car accident. There's a bond. You, so you literally charge the insurance companies or the vehicles owners these different fees on the work that we do on two separate vehicles on an accident scene? Is that, is that how we're breaking down these? Help me.
On accidents, we don't usually charge anybody for an accident. Where those fees come into place are if there's a structure fire. What we have found is most people on their insurance policies have, a portion of their insurance policy will allow for coverage for these types of fees if you have them down in a resolution or ordinance. And so our practice is, is Brian's guys go out, they take care of a fire, they submit a bill based upon this. We contact the insurance company. Whatever the insurance pays us, we collect. If they don't pay or whatever's uncollectible, we do not bill the homeowner for that.
Okay.
And that's a practice we started probably three or four years ago.
Well, I wasn't aware that we did that, so it must have been...
It might've been that often.
Three or four years ago, must have been in that, yeah. So I wasn't, and then as I read this, I went, how does that work? And do we actually try to recover that? Because then I couldn't remember any instance where we were trying to recover these fees or that we were writing off these fees. So, okay, so I was just a little confused and...
It's usually part of the insurance coverage.
Okay, I, now I get it, and I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Dwight?
I have a couple of questions. On the auditorium rental, how can we differentiate between different groups?
This was a policy that we discussed, again, a number of years ago, three, four years ago, and this was the fee structures that we came up with at that time. And I think the reason, again, was if you're using it to make money, we were going to charge you X. If you're not using it to make money, we charge you Y. And so that was the breakdown and the difference.
It seems to be the same space you're renting out. It should be the same rental prices, I would think.
If you wish to change that, we certainly can do that, but that was the policy discussion at that point.
Yeah, that was a little further back than that, than three or four years. And I remember being part of that conversation, and that was, we discussed it, nonprofits versus profit-taking, and it was, there was lengthy discussion, and it didn't, it wasn't one of those that everybody agreed upon, Dwight. You're right there, so...
Okay, maybe one more question then. On the number of false alarms that these entities can have, we narrowed it down a while back, and now they're still setting it at four for free. I think it's a little bit high. Have we had much for false alarms in some of these cases, more than four often?
In some places you do. I think if you would ask the chiefs to come up here, I think they'd tell you our number of false alarms have gone down in town. People started reaching that fifth or sixth alarm, and we're starting to get a penalty. They fix their systems to make sure they stay under that. False alarms can occur by a lightning strike will set off false alarms. That's not uncommon for that to happen, you know, otherwise they're just too sensitive or they're pointing in the wrong direction or whatever the case may be. If you give them four free ones, it gives them an opportunity to correct those problems before they start being penalized for them.
But we still use the same amount of man and equipment to arrive to the, to respond to the alarm, false or not?
We do. We do. I don't think we've billed, we have one customer, two customers?
One or two customers have had issues.
That go over the four limit. And so, again, we've really shrunk that amount down here in the last couple of years as we've implemented this policy.
Do we drink it more if we made it less?
I don't know how much tighter you can make it, again, with just those, those, you know, random acts of God that occur.
Okay.
You may be able to, and again, if that's something you want to do, turn the list note, we'll, we'll put it in there.
Probably not, sir. We'll leave it alone this time.
Further council discussion? Anybody in the audience? Further discussion, your vote, please. Motion carries eight zero. Resolution 5687 has been passed and approved. Next up is the public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. There'll be no action or discussion taken by the council at this time. Does anyone in the audience have an item for the council by way of the public forum? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll move on to discussions and reports. And next up, we have a number of funding requests from Main Street Beatrice. So Michael, if you want to come on up and we could start with a motion on the floor, please.
Mayor, I move the, excuse me, that the public funding request to Main Street Beatrice downtown holiday Christmas lighting maintenance in the amount of $448.75 be approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that the public funding request of Main Street Beatrice for downtown holiday Christmas lighting maintenance in the amount of $448.75 be approved. Michael, lay it on us.
Well, right now with the holiday Christmas lighting, this is something that we have been trying to undergo each and every year. Obviously, Beatrice is becoming more and more known for the, for just the holiday and Christmas displays that we have from Gage County Courthouse on down to the parks to the downtown area. And this is just a way to, for us to try to continue anticipating in that and trying to keep that, that project looking good for the city of Beatrice. So that's what this first one here is, is just trying to deal with a little more of the maintenance issues that are just ongoing with, with that type of project.
Okay, questions, comments? Phil?
Michael, is this just for maintenance or are we expanding the...
Right, right now, we are not expanding. What we're always evaluating is how to try to continue expanding that. At this time, we don't really have the resources with which to be able to expand it. That's usually something that comes from Main Street, but also usually a partnership with some of the property owners as well. But yeah, at this time, we haven't decided to continue expanding this year.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional council discussion? Anyone in the audience? And your vote on the motion, please. Motion carries seven zero with Councilmember Claybuck abstaining. And next, we have an additional request from Main Street Beatrice for Christmas holiday activities.
Mayor, I move that the public funding request to Main Street Beatrice for Christmas slash holiday activities in the amount of $1,973.15 be approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that the public funding request of Main Street Beatrice for Christmas holiday activities in the amount of $1,973.15 be approved. And Michael?
Yes, this right here is probably going to be one of our, our larger requests. This has got a variety of different activities and such that we do with that. One of the big things is creating the downtown shopper guides. I don't know if anyone got one of these last year in the mail. They go out to almost 6,500 people. It's just definitely a way to advertise some of the different events and whatnot that we have going on here in Beatrice, especially downtown. We have a variety of different things, a lot of different families and such like that that really do take advantage of this. I've even found people here this last couple of weeks that are still holding on to this, using it for a resource. And so it's just something that we try to put on for the Beatrice community, for our downtown business district and whatnot, and this just definitely helps us continue to keep doing that.
Any questions, comments from the council? Rich?
This comes out of that $20,000, doesn't it? We've got plenty of money left there, don't we?
Yes, this is part of the budget that we put aside for public promotions, is what we call them. We've put $25,000 to set aside all the fees. Once Michael's completed them, he'll submit receipts showing us what he has spent, and then we'll reimburse Main Street for those items, so...
And we've got plenty left in there.
We have sent none of the money for this budget year. This is the first go-around, so...
Bonus.
I know.
Should've asked for more.
Oh, see, well, this is the furthest it goes, and this is the same project as last year as well.
Any further discussion? How about from the audience? Okay, your vote, please. Motion carries seven zero with Councilmember Claybuck abstaining. Next, another public funding request to Main Street Beatrice for Chocolate Lover Shopping Day Extravaganza.
Yeah, this is actually...
We gotta have a motion first. I know you're going to do good at this, but let me move it.
Mayor, I move that the public funding request to Main Street Beatrice for Chocolate Lover Shopping Day Extravaganza in the amount of $486.58 be approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that the public funding request of Main Street Beatrice for Chocolate Lover Shopping Day Extravaganza in the amount of $486.58 be approved, and now you can go.
Yes, there we go. Well, this has been a very interesting event. First time being a part of it last year. It's really surprising, no matter what the weather is, we end up attracting a lot of people from the Beatrice trade area and beyond that come to spend a day of shopping and dining in Beatrice. And so this is an event that's definitely great. A lot of the different folks have really, really enjoyed this, and it's really surprising just how many people end up bringing their family, their kids, just themselves, and enjoy a fun day in Beatrice. Makes Beatrice, the downtown, look pretty darn busy on a weekend.
Okay, we have a discussion. From the council, from the audience, your vote, please. Motion carries seven zero with Councilmember Claybuck abstaining. And we have one final request for public funding of Main Street Beatrice for the Night of the Great Pumpkin.
Mayor, I move that the public funding request to Main Street Beatrice for Night of the Great Pumpkin in the amount of $433.91 be approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that the public funding request to Main Street Beatrice for Night of the Great Pumpkin in the amount of $433.91 be approved. And Michael?
Yep, again, Night of the Great Pumpkin. Obviously, this has been going on in Beatrice for quite some time. Very, very popular event. I mean, just children-wise, usually 1,000, 1,500 kids a lot of times that end up coming downtown, so it's really hard to truly get a exact number, but definitely several thousand people that end up coming down to enjoy this event. It's very, very, very popular. And we've already put it out on Facebook, and it's surprising how many hundreds have hits and everything else that's already receiving, so big thing for Beatrice.
Okay, council discussion?
Think the hot dog stand will be ready by then?
She left. We don't know now.
We should ask her, huh?
The popcorn stand, that was one of their first events last year, was trying to get their name out, and they're planning on being, of course, a part of that more this year. You guys all have a poster, please help us spread the word on it.
I have one question, though.
Yeah?
Since you have a couple eateries and a couple photo places in here, are they helping to promote and pay for any of this?
The Daily Sun obviously does quite a bit to help us promote this. You know, it's one of those things where you'll notice we don't really have huge amounts of expense trying to get it out and promoting it, advertising dollars with the Daily Sun or Quebe or KTT. They end up really helping us get that word out there. And so, yeah, luckily, they are helping us promote it.
Are the four that I mentioned on here, though, the...
Did the ones...
Three, then?
Well, like Cat's Photography, I know they've been putting it out on Facebook. That's really their, one of their main ways. I mean, a lot of people have been trying to share this out there. Like I said, it's definitely, the word's getting out right now, there's no doubt. And the word, it's surprising just for not really having to put a huge amount into dollars, the word expands to several of the communities around here to come to Beatrice. This is a great event.
It seems strange that you would have all these businesses open up, you get your only advertising if you want the flyer.
Yeah, I understand what you're meaning. It's one of those things where, yeah, if we tried listing every single business that was going to be open, you know, we couldn't do it on a flyer. And, and so we try to highlight some of the different things, the special giveaways that people are really looking for. We tell businesses that, hey, if you have a special activity or event, let us know, and we will try to help promote that as well. And again, yeah, a lot of those people help us promote the event and kick back in other ways. But no, as far as listing every business that participates, we don't really know. Some of them don't even know if they're going to be able to hand out candy until that week of, because of staffing and...
I guess I was thinking more like of not listing ones that aren't going to...
That are not, okay, I see what you mean.
That you have other eatery in places, you have other businesses open that don't have a jewelry store on here, you don't have clothing...
No, no. Again, our idea was to try to spur a little more spending in our community that night. So as we have people from out of town that are coming in, you know, it is after hours, yeah, hopefully, they come in and they, they have dinner with us. They, they do some of those different things and see the other businesses that we have to offer that are participating in it.
Additional discussion? Excuse me, anyone in the audience? Okay, your vote on the motion. Motion carries seven zero with Councilmember Claybuck abstaining. Thank you, Michael. Brings us to the end of our agenda. We are trying to find a time for a Boswell meeting with next Monday evening. Work for all of you gentlemen.
I know I'm out of town next week. I'm out of town next week.
Phil's gone, I went...
Holiday.
Everybody else?
I may be gone.
Phil, Rick? Rest of you, you think you can make it? Or you guys think you can make it?
Yep.
Yep.
What about other evenings? Where we can try before the next council meeting? We'd have to start maybe at five-thirty. Does that work out, maybe?
I like that better.
Time do you get back, Ted?
Roll the dice.